Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to all to order the August ninth, two thousand twenty. Beginning of the Delray Oaks.
Commissioner Jack Shaw. Commissioner Amati.
President.
Commissioner Getzels.
Here.
Commissioner Craker.
Here.
Commissioner Kene.
Here.
Vice Chair Wood.
Here.
Chairman Hayward.
Here. And I would like to. This on but. I believe it's the flag of the United States of America and to Republicans. One edition. Any that is. With liberty and justice. For the agenda in comments. I need. You know, from the. And then. What's that?
Okay.
All there.
Bye, thank you. And I told the thing I wasn't here.
Okay. Okay, well, comment, anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not appearing on the agenda. So now the public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered by. There will be a limited time limit of not more than three minutes for you to figure. No action will be taken on by the commission on matter products under this item and all comments will be for staff.
For some part. I mean, the other day. I'm the president of the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group, a former planning commissioner and city house person. And I'm going to start with the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group mission statement, so you're aware of what we are. The Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group is organized exclusively for promoting goodwill within the city as well as to provide cheerful and educational opportunities for the citizens of Delray Oaks and to provide a positive community environment to the city without political bias or influence. I'm here to encourage you all to attend the fall picnic that begins with a kiddie parade down Angeles Way. Come, meet and listen to the people that you represent. Your presence shows the dedication that you promised when you applied for your position as a planning commissioner. I want to thank Denise, Gary and George for volunteering with this organization. Your deeds do not go unnoticed. I also want to thank all city staff for their kindness and dedication to supporting goodwill in our community. Together with kindness, we can make this the best place to live. So please mark your calendars for October seventh for the fall picnic. The potato bar last year was fantastic. We're going to do it again. Along with that, you get a drink and a salad. And the suggested donation is five dollars. I'm waiting for everybody to pull their phones out. Okay, I'll just see what they're.
Anyone else? Okay, see, see. Those can be comments. Okay, Billy. Any comments, questions? Be honest. What is? Your motion. Right there. Okay, thank you. Okay. This is our new thing here and you return back. I'll turn it over, Karen.
Commissioner Panay.
Yes.
If you could come with me, Commissioner Getzels and Vice Chair Wood, we're going to go stand by the flag. This. Oh. You know what? That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. What we're gonna do is I'm just working to swear all of you at the same time. Okay, so raise your right hand. Okay, so I state your name. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend, that I support and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith, that I bear true faith and allegiance, allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right, thank you, Karen, and congratulations. Yes. Thank you, Sam. Full business, there is none. New business. Yeah, the Apple State's names are Colonel Cardenas owners. A R C twenty-three dot O two seven vote place. Requesting our technical review to add a three hundred square foot garage to the firm's single family dwelling by converting existing garage storage. We're being asked to analyze provided materials, make appropriate findings, both positions of approaching and give direction to staff. We have representatives on that path and. I'm going to stand and give us a brief synopsis of the vision of the building.
No, my name is. My name is. I'm the owner. And the contractor. Well, the garage is, you know, like stated. In, which is mentioned right now. It's a just under six meters per feet. Materials be actually the house. I mean, you know, it's pretty straightforward. On the G, visually it's going to be the same. I don't know if exactly if you guys have any questions in particular or what really would you like to be the point of?
All right, we'll get to that, we'll get to that here, so, okay. We'll go to commissioners for any questions, clarification.
No, I mean, pretty great one and the questions.
Mr. Getzel?
Well, I wrote mine and I really don't have it in some.
Okay. Commissioner, mine?
But I think.
Yeah.
We can assume that we have a network space to kind of really printing size.
I think that was the size that was presented for me to submit, but I think the scale is different depending on the page format that we, because usually printed on our business.
Yeah.
We usually print it on our sexual form, and I don't think they're really changed. So that was one to get, it was different on the bigger case.
And then the other question that I have is comparing your comparing the plans with your top plan. Could you talk about your side, the side of the house and the.
The side of the house.
For credit proposed.
Looks a little. The asking about. She's not going to say that.
Yeah.
So. There's no plans. Should be, should be five feet. To be five feet, is that within the setback of the city part? Then we can adjust it. We can make sure only for the setbacks are within six feet of us. Or if I'm. It wasn't very, a hundred percent clear, I wasn't sure that I know it's based on the percentage of the watch.
No, it's specifically.
Yeah, I didn't have the information, you know, that.
With some exceptions.
Okay, so I make sure we can just say that.
No, that's.
We're.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had actually my question about the, it has to be twenty feet from the street because it's a setback from the front and I didn't. I didn't, I didn't get my team to measure it out.
That is, it is.
Certainly is what it's.
It's like twenty foot, six inches or like, yeah, that's really close, but it is, we do it out to you.
Okay.
I'm actually sure.
All right, and it's interesting that your roof lines, you know, the first one goes this way and then your second one goes this way and it's kind of. I don't, are you, how, do you know how much should the storage room, previous garage in have been?
That is about, about two hundred and.
Nine. Something like that, okay.
Nine is your.
Two hundred and nine.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jeff, oh, thank you. Normally, the formal area is ten percent. You've always had to probably call the sex because it's not straightforward.
Right.
There is a formula, which I know that formula is.
Which the applicant did receive all the information.
Yeah.
To get that setback.
And, you know, if you wanted to go whatever you said, you could always ask for a variance, but. Then you have to satisfy the size of your lot.
Okay.
I assume that everything always going to match to something you did.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the legal system now that has double inside, so we're playing on doing stuff for the garage. But yeah, colors are too, to match it correctly. But we're from the serial cause. Okay, let's smash the system.
So, yes, thank. Commissioner.
Yes, my question for what's sent back and they've been answered. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of mine have already been answered, but I do have one question about, first of all, the drawing sufficient for what we hear is, you know, that setback according to these pictures can be, but we know it's more than that, but we don't know what it really is. The other. Have you spoken to neighbors and all about this? Have they commented on?
I wanted personally.
I actually did ask a neighbor across the street and then he said, oh, they're great people.
Yeah, I have a personal, I think the owner said, but I have a personal name.
No one's made any comment that. I personally.
No, actually. My neighbor that will affect the most, you know, we were out there talking and, you know, we talked about his new house bedroom window and I said, oh, we'll put them planted there or paint a mirror or something. So you don't have to look at one of them. Yeah, but other than that, he's, he's been very, I mean, all, all the neighbors in the whole place are very.
So it looks like from the survey that we have here and then the drawings submitted, it looks like you could add objects in the way.
Yeah.
So we don't have any. Square footage. Yeah, there's the covered, the lot coverage area, there's no whether it's within the parameters, we have second city apartments. Was the percentage, well, it depends on the size of the house, there's a full scale. So I don't know what the size of the dwelling is or the size of the lot, which was typically on plans, usually compared to. This is, this is an accessory structure, it's not a good space, so I'm not sure. So we, we really need to know that, you know, if it's, you know, if it's greater than what the minimum set by ordinance, then we do know that very exist. It's provision main houses, we need to know what main structure, we need to know what the coverage of the block coverage is.
And what's the percentage of the lot moving? Was the gross. No.
Yeah, I. I know what it is based on looking at the. Flat base today, we're in the, we're in between the six thousand and the next one down, I believe the percentage is.
We need to know the percentage.
Oh, the max footprint, yeah, six hundred, seventy-three hundred fifteen square foot lot. So. Seven thousand three hundred fifteen square foot lot. And that's just in the twenty-seven, seventy-nine, thirty percent, that would be the max we could have for living space, that's what you're asking. And where.
Yeah, all this.
The house is fourteen fifty or five, one or two hundred, so what are we saying? I think we've fallen to that, that thirty percent of that, that'll be great, thirteen, we're not, we're not over it.
Yeah. Okay, that's all the questions I have, and we can go out now to public comment on this project.
Mr. Chen, I do have another question.
Okay.
Because when I look at. Original plans in the city, you can see that the house there is at seven foot, seven inches already from the edge. And so if you add a garage there, how are we going to make it seven feet instead of that? Do you understand what I'm saying? Six feet.
Six feet, right?
Well, yeah.
The next one's six feet, right, or should I still figure out the way to the inclination?
It gets two feet is the minimum.
Okay, I saw that.
Yeah, it gives you very little wiggle room, you have like a foot and a half of wiggle room.
Yeah. That's something I'm going to verify with my architect, but if that's a requirement, it will eventually be the requirements that is, it will be approved by a building and. Oh, make sure that those setbacks are within six feet. The beginning that we initially met and we looked at the property. Were you sure where the. So what I referenced was a hundred percent properly. So wanted to get this in, but like I said, whatever changes or modifications we do to meet the requirements for this setback, no problem. Yeah.
Okay, nothing more, commissions about for the comments.
Thank you.
Okay, well, comments, so comments from commissioners. Mr. Craker.
No, I mean, I don't know if we just really gendered the, you know, the. You can come in and verify all this, the inspector, they all have been setback, they draw potential drawings, we can make that a condition, but assuming that's all good and.
Mr. Getzel.
Yeah, as long as we can satisfy the setback requirements and are comfortable with the percentage of coverage. The maximum percentage that we're going to see back when you said in the building coverage on. I'm. I'm back for it, I do have a one more question, though, sorry. The plan. But the architectural plan goes like the gazebo. Yeah. And back vector, yeah, that's not how it's structured, no, thank you.
Okay, what?
Yes, I agree with the two points already, as long as it means I step that both side and percentage of property on the lot that you would accept that lot.
Same, but then I, I'm not seeing how it would fit in, but I'm counting on you to make sure.
I saw the same thing that you brought up. That can be right, because I was a smart dirty line with a different schedule. And the other side of property is fifteen, which matches this, the other one. I don't know, maybe I'll have to fork out. You know, another couple brands, you know, another surveyor, because it just doesn't make sense for it's fifteen on one side of the property and seventeen on the other, because, you know, I, I go out there and I physically measure it. And six, six feet you can do easily, that takes that fifteen foot down to thirteen, so, which gives us an extension of the original lot. Who here doesn't use their garage for? Doesn't, oh.
Don't knock.
Put your ass in garage if they don't lose first. I know, I just would like to have part of it, I just be where it's part of the truck. So, yeah, we'll make it happen, we'll make it happen.
Okay, yes, we bring this up, we'll enter a motion.
Make a motion that we accept A R C number twenty-three, that drill, continue on verification by the inspector of that on coverage and setbacks of that.
Okay, that's perfect. Okay, okay, further discussion? Mr. Craker?
No, no, we do that, that's, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner, my. Okay, all right. Roll call this.
Anyone roll call?
Yeah.
Commissioner Panay?
Yes.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood? Chairman Hayward?
Yes.
Commissioner Amati?
Yes.
Commissioner Getzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Craker?
Yes.
Okay, after this, with the continued, so the fitting in that action and the lot coverage. Is that? And it's funny to have this period, so. It's already working for twenty days, and you. They can answer.
And who can I? See, I doubt.
Yeah.
I know.
I said twenty, twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hey, that's a need, alternative to do, see, consider recommend this to the state council to adopt orders of many in Delray Oaks municipal code sections five point two four point zero two zero and five point two four point zero three zero and five point two four point zero four zero. And for. All right, thank you, Karen. So those, those of you who are with us last year will recall that we gave you a kind of an update on where we were with the short term rental program, and we were coming out of the pandemic and people were starting to travel again and we're starting to see an uptick in short term rental utilization and so we gave you an update on how many short term rentals we had, how many are hosted, how many are unhosted. And I think the general consensus among the group was that there was some concern about the increasing number of short term rentals in the communities. At that time, we weren't really, as we're coming out of pandemic, people are starting to settle out and shake out and change and we were seeing a shift in how the short term rental program was being utilized. And we weren't seeing an increase in the number of short term rentals, but we were seeing a shift from, from hosted to unhosted and the numbers of unhosted were growing up, so the direction from, from your group was to keep an eye on that and come back in a year or so and talk about what the potential implications of that will to the community and get feedback from the community on where we want to go going forward. As probably everybody knows, as you certainly all know, we, we have the most. And we have the most. Short term rental word in the region, most other jurisdictions have some sort of restriction or complete ban. We're the only ones that allow all short term rentals to happen on. As to just you buy and you get it and as long as you're in this hand and you continue, so. I'll share my script. All right, I think you're kind of data.
So now everything doesn't.
Good, the department can move with that. I'd be happy to enlist your. I'm getting sign up. Like that credit card else for never.
Thank you.
Do you have that one?
Yes.
All right, so. So as I mentioned last year, we gave you an update on where, where hosted just for everybody posted means that it's somebody who's using their primary residence, they live on site and they ran out of a portion of their house, whether it be a room or, or something like that, and the host is always there. It's never unhosted, unhosted, obviously, the whole house situation where the person who's managing it lived off of, off thing. And we'll get into the new ones of that a little bit later. But so last year, a number of posted, we in twenty point two, we had seven, currently we still have seven. And where the big increase has been last year in the unhosted, we had fifteen and now we're up to twenty-two. Caveat with that, two, two of the short term rentals that we have that are currently classified as current definition of unhosted are actually primary residences that are are rented out as unhosted when the resident of that house, not only the good money cage, then when they're not at the house, so they it, it's technically by our definition an unhosted because they're not there while the person renting the house is, is renting the house, but it is their primary residence, so that's the ones that we'll want to talk about later. And then something to consider as we go forward is, you know, this is becoming a significant revenue source for the city. And as other resources, you know, revenue sources go down like cannabis taxes, things like that. This has actually been a bit of a bridge and it's got us considerably, we went all really actually doubled from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we've gone up from about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars in tax revenues to over a hundred and fifty thousand in tax dollars this last year. And we have a hundred and ninety thousand budgeted for this year. So just what's going on regionally, as I said, Carmel, Monterey, Pacific Grove, they all prohibit all short term rentals. Little caveat, Pacific Grove and the coastal zone, the coastal commission bought their measure, their mountain measures, so in coastal zone, you still have rentals as long as permitted by the coastal commission. City Marina allows what we would call hosted or home shared situation, but all unhosted or prohibited. San City is the same. And then seaside is the only one that's close to us, they, they don't cap hosted rentals and they came up with a ninety cap for them citywide and it was just a number that was suggested by a council member, so there was no science behind it. It was just, they, they estimated that they had about a hundred and twenty unpermitted short term rentals and as the protection went along, a council member said, well, I think it should be ninety, and that's what. So, so there, there really is no science to it. Generally speaking, when, when, when we looked around at what other jurisdictions are doing it, it depends on the. So, so there, there really is no science to it. Generally speaking, when, when, when we looked around and what other jurisdictions are doing it, it depends on the character. And it depends on, uh, you know, on the economy of the community and, and how it's made up. Um, so most cities. I mean, honestly, there really is no city like Del Rio's. And this is a very unique, uh, uh, city, uh, in a lot of ways, and so trying to find something comparable is really difficult. Uh, but when you look around. Still arbitrary, but, uh, when councils do look at capping short term rentals, uh, they generally look at how much housing inventory they have in the community and then they decide how much. Did we want to allow to be short term rentals and how much do we want to keep? Being common to the fact that we have a housing crisis and so generally between one and five percent is where most cities, uh, fall, you know. Cities like Carmel obviously would be unique because most of their, on their second homes, uh, Palm Springs. Was kind of created as a vacation location and destination and, uh, so they, they do it based on neighborhood and this is trying to kind of claw back a little bit. Um, but generally speaking, they, they kept it twenty percent. Um, and, and really they're trying to get back to twenty percent because they're part, they're part of C D. Real trend right now, um, but it's, it's a unique community there, so it's different. Um, so it's really up to the community here what you all, uh, would like to do. Um, there is a lot of interest in our program, there is a lot of interest in our community. Because of our location and it, you know, every house that goes on the market generates interest for people to purchase it for short term rents. Uh, and I think that's why we've seen the increase of, you know, in seven new ones this year and. Tree of those were just in the last couple of months, right? So it's going to continue to heat up, so that's something for you all to consider. So the recommendations, uh, that we put forward are, are really pretty simple. Um, you can get yourself tied up in the knots trying to, uh. Really overthink this, uh, you know, if, if you've read the newspaper over the last four or five years, just here locally, you can see the communities that have overthought this and have really tried to. Uh, come up with creative ways to, to manage this, uh, have, have a lot of starts and. And fits and have a lot of different iterations. I live in Pacific Grove, uh, I think we had three, maybe four different iterations of what the rules were over the course of four years and then the. Uh, the residents took it upon themselves to do a valid initiative to resolve the issue. Uh, City Marina is at difficulties with. Trying to implement something and then bring it back and try to change it and then try to change it. Seaside had, you know, problems with coming up with a really convoluted and complex system. And the system with a, a waiting list and, you know, hiring somebody to come and decide who became inverted and second and all that and, uh, really saw no participation. They, they estimated a hundred and twenty unpermitted short term rentals and after four years of trying to get the program going, they admitted about thirty or forty, actually came in and got permits. So, so if it may be too complicated, then it doesn't work and we have limited staffing, so, uh, administratively trying to manage something that's super complicated, so we try to keep this simple. And, and basically, and yes, this is arbitrary, but that right out there. As I said, we currently have twenty two, uh, short term, unhosted short term rentals, two of those, I think we can talk about separately, how we might want to handle that type of, uh, short term rental, but purely. Unhosted resident, not non-resident type of, uh, situation, we have twenty of those. Um, and just as simple now, if we, so we have about eight hundred, uh. Units in, in the city, that's about two and a half percent. Um, so that was right in the middle of that one to five percent. Uh, kind of best practice that's out there in California. So there was nothing scientific about it, I just tell them that, so please. We're, we're holding it, and tell me what you guys think. Uh, this is just a suggestion and I'm, I'm looking for input on this, but so for right now, the recommendation and the way that was. For both language to modify the ordinance is if we do want to cap it, then capping it at tw- at two and a half percent would be basically saying we're done, we, we have all these short term rentals. Um, and then the two. You know, depending on how the community wants to go, how you all want to go, how the council wants to go, um, we can just say we're going to allow those now and through attrition will get back to twenty. Uh, probably better in community because these are second, th- this is a part of the income proposed and this is a difficult place to live. And cost of living is, is, is a real challenge for all of us. And so, uh, providing that opportunity because of the beautiful area that we live in, the fact that people want to come visit here and so if you want to go on vacation and you want to rent your house out for a week or two while you're on vacation. I think that's a reasonable thing for us to allow residents to do, but that's up to you and that's up to the community, but I think. Uh, if, if we are going to allow that, uh, it's been recommended, it's suggested by one of the letters. Uh, you know, that we might want to do that and then limit the number of days that somebody can do that. Um, that's where the administrator can ball that in the city and that's really difficult, so please, so I want to keep it as simple as possible. And, and, you know, if you're going to contemplate allowing people to, to rent out their homes while they're on vacation, I don't, I, I, I would certainly recommend that you not put it on staff for us to put you staff because that's really difficult. Uh, it's already, the, the program's already getting public with the number that we have to, to regulate and keep control of. And right now, we've kind of hit a sweet spot. We're, we're doing really well with revenue. Uh, we have enough that we can manage at a staff level, um, and honestly, we, uh, we don't get complaints. It, it's, it's really unique when I talk to seaside, another place, they're short term rentals, they have a lot of complaints and, you know, a lot of parties and problems like that and, you know. Knock on wood, but we, we don't really have the problem here. Every once in a while, something pops up, but, uh, all, all without. Exception, really, all of the proprietors of the short term rental that we have are excellent and they respond immediately to different real situations. And they're really receptive to feedback and with that, so it's been a good program. Um, but I know. One commissioner has raised issues, so this is the next. About parking, parking becoming, becoming an issue, uh, branding, maybe news or, you know, families are starting to move back as a character, the community's starting to change and we're having more, uh, parking issues. Um, I, I kind of stole this from the seaside, bring it up in Davis, David did it as well because they were seeing the same situation with their narrow streets and, and. Just putting in language, ensuring that if you're running a, a, a short term rental, that you're providing sufficient, sufficient parking spaces and limiting the number of vehicles that can come. Uh, basically, one per. Yeah, well, yeah, so generally speaking, you're going to have two to three cars, uh, for each short term rental, so that's a recommendation again. If, if that's something that you all agree to, you want to tweak, you want to work on, um, but I do know, we're talking with this group that, that you're having concerns and especially in certain. Pockets of the community about, uh, limited parking space and, and tight areas of the, the roadway, um, and then sound. Honestly, from staff perspective, this is a difficult one to put in, but it is an issue and I want to have house parties. That's something that our police department deals with separately when they're party issues, um, but generally speaking, you know, when. We want people to come to the community and enjoy the community, develop and be respectful of the neighborhood and be respectful of the neighbors and amplify sound is a way. To, to cause nuisance and, um, same thing seaside was having problems with that, with people playing loud music and not really paying attention to their neighbors and so they put this in their ordinance. Seems to be working for them, so I included it, you know, extended it to a park, we don't want it to become an issue with these short term rentals. Um, so those are the primary changes that we're recommending. There's some other painted languages that, language, you know, and paint up some typos and. And added a couple, uh, definitions, but those are all my administrative. Um. Yeah, so I have one here, yeah, let's see if you have, everybody has. Love to hear your thoughts. Here's the back of the mission, um, for. Questions.
Um, thanks for the work you did on us, uh, I mean, I don't think it's, it's not easy counting to render what injuries and. All they do is write the papers about how they can do it, so.
They're trying to be, since I was there.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, every, every month, she'll look again, they can't even. They're coming, they gotta prevent it also far, so it's hard. Now, I think with the clawing back, you, you're right, I know it's an issue. But as Pacific Grove learned, uh, the growth in check, they, they become the issue, so, and then clawing back a whole lot part of it. Getting out front of the problem and, you know, limits on it that are clear and important, so good, good on you trying to, uh, do that. And people are definitely coming, I know, I, I know some lot of house here, they want the I three nine one zero tip code, it's. You know, the most places that you look Monterey, it's very marketable and, or they can't do it on night, so they, they come to Del Rio's and that's what, you're exactly right, people are buying the homes. Specifically to do this, so, uh, a couple of questions on the. Any thought given the license a time, I like PG, they're talking about, you know, it's good for a year and you have to redo it and you're not guaranteed all that kind of nonsense that's going on. Is there, is there a button?
An annual fee.
Yeah, yeah, the fee's there, but is, is, but can you just keep renewing the license? Or do you thought of making like one year and get pride, you know, it's just yours. Going to your mom.
No, it's a, it's an annual renewal.
Right.
After go out the application, they renew the. But it has a very good standing, they, they can just keep it, generally speaking.
Okay.
There would have to be a reason not to.
Okay, that's fine, and what if someone? So if we have a necessary, like one of these twenty unhosted, someone buys the house as an investment, will they get automatically to keep? That, or they have to go through that whole process again and so if there's a way, I guess my question, there's a way. Someone buys an existing S T R. Can we talk about how to handle that? Does that house fall off and then would the person on the waiting list gets in or do we talk about the mechanics of that?
It's still staying there. So you mean if somebody buys a house.
So you got, you got two, three homes wait right on the waiting list. Someone that's active S T R right now, when he's, they decide to sell it and they sell it to another investor. Don't take a living that they're going to keep as S T R. Do they, do they transfer that? No, okay, so the waiting list first, we get it, that person gives them the waiting list.
Right.
Then okay, all right, does it make you, does that, that.
Right, come on. Yeah, no, no, we need to apply separately and then.
Cause I'm not going to make your, make that clear in there. That's why, that's the way you, okay. All good things, understood, okay. Okay. Begin school guy, I agree, it's all sorts of stuff. Okay, um, let's see here. Is there, is there going to be a time when, uh, I, I guess, how, how does the order become effective? I guess I'm trying to get out. It's thirty days from kind of the council, does it, correct?
Thirty days from, yeah, from adoption.
Yeah. Thirty days and all that, okay, the, we might have people trying to scoot in under that, so I guess time is something to give an eye on. Okay, I like that, it's from, I, I know certain people from PG and, you know, car week, uh, program. Gas dustable, they, that's when they go on vacation, all right, they just, uh, they, they go around with two, three events a year, so give him someone enough time. In, when they, if they roll that, if they roll that incidental notice. How hard is it to track? Okay, oh, you done there thirty days, they coming again, I go through the thirty days, is that a hard thing to track or? Okay, so if they were to set, well, if that's not a neat thing to track, I didn't hope I can collect your advanced tax money, if it. That is something you should track in the days, it wouldn't sound awful, okay. Well, that's, that's an issue then, but, uh, the idea, I think is a good idea. Any thought using a vendor, uh, is it just not economically, the, the, to track it down like, like what Monterey?
Right, it's, it's just not a big enough program. Another thing that comes up is, is, uh, you know, for bigger cities like Monterey and Zeta, if you're big enough, then Airbnb will collect, collect the taxes for you and where I collect the taxes. But we reached out to them and then which.
A lot of people like is keeping an eye out for people who are doing it on the regular.
There, there, there are and we can look at it, there, there are software programs and it's an annual fee.
Yeah, I didn't know if it makes sense, I didn't know if that makes sense for, I don't really, potentially, if, if we get super complicated here, then yeah.
Right. Well, Monterey, you just do the, 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 go online and just go to Airbnb and put in Monterey and then. Yeah, and, and, yeah, we did that, I, I, okay, I was curious, I even found the economics of that, almost vendor report. Yeah, Commissioner Gensel actually forwarded me a, a vendor to provide that.
A year, it depends on size of the community.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, for a, probably fifty thousand a year, it's costing, I mean, that's three thousand to, to make sure we save in the world.
Yeah.
That that's sounding a bit.
Good investments, it's an option, yeah.
Yeah, I, so I changed it, we have a beacon. Numbers, local, but I think you get us going in the right direction, definitely think, like we said back before, again, last time, definitely, you know, it's less than we would do. The BP experience when you're trying to follow it back and that's, we all watched that play out and that was true. And you could probably speak to that. Thank you.
Sure, I got something. Quite into our.
I have a couple of questions, one, I do like the thought of the incremental, that may be something. To be considered, uh, in the future or if we go to a vendor oversight program or something. So we're not putting initial burden on staff. I think that would, would be a, an option, is, is incremental, maybe limiting it to. Thirty six days. Years. Um, I do have, uh, it's, it's kind of like wordsmithing, but I have. And did you, uh, since then, third, and did you, um, uh, thing one. We talked about helping meaning and owner or tenant. But everything else talks about owner or shared ownership. And that mean is, is kind of, look at the ones below that, it sounds like only an owner can, can do it, uh, a short term. Not, not somebody who rents the house, but not, uh.
Right, it was a, so shared ownership, not a rent, not, not a renter necessarily, it's.
No, no, yeah, that's not what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay. At the top, you say an owner shall be, the host shall be an owner or a tenant. Who rents the revenue. Further down, you said dwelling unit where the owner. At with majority interest, no other owner. Everywhere you say owner, but I think you probably want to say host.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you know, we can find that, yeah, we're trying, because of the environment changing and sort of, you know, with Alex and I, when we're trying to formulate this language. We're trying to capture the reality where we're having, you know, uh, parents passing away and they're passing the home on to multiple siblings. And they all have a shared interest in the home and they want to do, uh, short term rental, so it's, it's one in one single law.
Yeah, but, but say we'll own or, or tenant.
Right.
That, that everyone's a word owner or tenant, or one's a word host, but.
Yeah, or. Make sure the land is uniform throughout.
Yeah, so that somebody doesn't try to go around it or.
Yeah.
I mean, it is up to, to me, honestly, it, it would be up to, you know, as an owner. I've had a long term rental, make sure my tenant didn't turn it into a short term. But that would be between myself and, and my tenant, but we're not prohibiting the tenant. For staying in, you know, ornaments from having short term.
Right, uh, yeah, and the, the way they were written, a tenant has the ability to do that, but only with written authorization probably on there.
I did pass, uh, and, and I did, uh, receive a copy of what they're currently charging, some fees. And, and they are up here fifteen, ten percent. And, uh, these are one time equivalent fee for, uh, whole house is. Five hundred dollars a year plus the eight hundred and twenty dollar application. And the cost is, is, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars annual fee plus the eight hundred and twenty dollar application. And the cost is, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars annual fee plus the eight hundred and twenty dollar application. So. You say there's a total percentage, the the transient occupancy tax is, we cannot set that that they have. Yes. Unaccounted registration and whatnot. Yeah, that's all, thank you. That's just a few questions. So I see that you do a annual inspection for smoke detectors. I'm wondering if that burdens something to the administration and why is that required? I've not seen that in other places.
Uh, actually, most places require, uh. Require annual, yeah, well.
An actual inspection?
Inspection, yeah, 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 since since I required an annual, uh, whole building inspection from the building inspector. Um, but yeah, fire, uh, that's just a safety issue and that was, uh, I think that was from the fire department. Um, generally speaking, we don't do the inspection. We have an affidavit that the owner can can fill out and sign. Assisting that they have the proper.
That was what I was going to ask if you could just do it that way, rather than having somebody actually go into the home over here.
Yeah.
We're just being heard from, report Karen going to drive her.
Yeah. It would be, it would be the fire department or a fire contract and and they actually love that opportunity. Because it's a, it's not, they use it as an opportunity to educate people on fire, so they love it.
Okay, that's good then. Yeah, and then I think my other question or comment was related to. Um, those that are the primary residents, maybe we're gonna discuss that later, so I'll wait for my comments on that. But the number of new ones, new that were the new buys. So how many recently have just bought a home and slipped into a short term rental?
Uh, just the last few months, it's been three or four, right?
Yeah. Wow, and then also, I wonder, uh, this is the issues of the density. So like, do you think, like, or how many are on the other side? And I know you have how many needs to be on your home stack?
Yeah.
So the numbers, it's condensed.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, it's when a house goes on the market.
Right.
And so, um, that's where it starts to get complex and then figure out other jurisdictions and that problems, I mean. Yeah, it is something we do. We could certainly say, you know, Portola gets four, uh, Rosita gets four, the other gets four. Um, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're not gonna cluster, because they're gonna, they're they're going to go where opportunities. Right, yeah, you can do that, but then, that that becomes conversation. Yeah, City of Seaside, for some reason, says that they can't be within fifty five feet of each other, um, which. I guess means every other house can be one.
Right. Be virtually running.
Several people have told me or asked me, says, you know, so and so, you've got a rental down here, and I call Karen, I go. But I think of a permit, and they always do, so it seems like they're, they're doing the right thing. Um. I don't know who mentioned something about cars, too many cars on the script. But maybe I can probably get it, but it, uh, yeah, you know, if. First one's his whole house, people going on vacation, Zach, all the time, you know, the car comes in, but when. Another lives there, and then somebody else comes in, rents that bedroom, now it's another part. Rosita is pretty narrow and I have to pull into a vacant spot to let a car go by, because it's pretty tight for a couple of cars, but. Um, another thing that, you know, it's, it's always nice to know who your neighbor is. Uh, but when we have short term rentals, you don't know who's in there, you know, who's stealing something normally, you know. And you, there was a strange car over there, you know, then my other thought is, well, somebody's dropping a short term rental. That's their problem and not mine. I hate to say that, but short term rentals always look good. They have to look nice. I've got people on my street that wrenches, I hope. That, uh, looks like a garbage dump. I mean, it's terrible. Weeds are growing and everything else. So the short term, that the plus side is the short term rental always look nice. Um, I have trouble, back to the comping, I have trouble. As a planning commissioner, telling somebody what they can and can't do with their property. You know, in this day and age, you're spending seventy million dollars for your house and wanted to say, yeah, we don't like that. So I I had a problem with that, but I have to consider everybody in the neighborhood, not just that, so that sort of alleviates that problem. Uh, I don't know. How to alleviate the comping for the city to enforce that, like, uh. Then he said, I can throw a rock and get three of them in my property. Um, they are spread apart, but I can still throw a rock. I don't know if that's too many, too little, um. Uh, I don't know where I heard it, I from staff with the short term rentals, they get through a complaint. They get three complaints, come in, it's pulled. Is that true? Uh, so if it isn't. I think it should be put in there if there's enough complaints on that particular piece of property that we used to.
I think I think it's under the, the city manager has the ability to.
Okay.
Right, is that at the discretion of the city manager and and complaints are one of the things that that can be considered for revocation. Um, obviously, a determinate, uh. Decisions to revoke a permit can, is applicable after coming to you, you all in the city council. Um, but yeah, that is one of the categories that.
That's why, that isn't on paper, I think it should be, um. I know someone that does the, uh, short term when they're out of town, and they have a binder with. Emergency phone numbers, everything, it's really a nice binder. And I think that might be something that we could suggest and maybe have a form or something that we could get out to them that has. Sort of very solid, our rules and regulations, no noise, no excessive parking, yada, yada, yada. And then suggestions to the renter, the owner of the house. To put in our phone up, our police phone up, or something like that. So when they get in there, they can go through it. See if there's an emergency, uh, nine one, obviously, anybody knows nine one one, but, uh, still our phone number or. Police department's non-emergency number.
I was gonna say, I use a lot of Airbnbs, and everyone I've met in NASA.
You know.
They'll go with vanity if I're ready, good to have those.
I've been in one of them.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, I just thought that would be a good idea. Um. Eric was mentioning extending the permits. Monterey, uh, city Monterey has boat slips. You own that boat slip forever, and you can sell that boat slip to someone.
Yeah, yes and no, I don't know.
I thought, sort of joke, maybe we could do that, and when they sell that. Yeah, so you, you have that, but anyway, those are my only concerns, uh, on sort of.
Well, I think we've pretty much covered a lot of the issues, uh, and, yes, there are car issues in our city. And I'm not sure they're all caused by renters or, um, you know, people that just, yeah, filling in.
Houses don't, the Dicky's or they want that one part. Okay, um, thank you, I, you know, I don't really have anything yet, I mean, I, I found these people. Pretty good thinking and, uh, analyzing this thing, so they did a good job, um. Yeah, the one that George talked about putting the, uh. A binder or whatever in the house so that they know, the renters know what the ordinance is and if they have a lot of party, what the consequences could be, uh.
Yeah, or or like you were saying, if you, if it would help you as a manager to have more precise, um. Prince Bach went to intervene, that is not such as you were saying.
There's three points we're gonna use, it's gonna be better, get on it.
You can also reach out to the chambers of commerce and have them supply some things to put in the boat, maybe for, who knows, uh. Okay, um. Thank you for listening, um. And we're about to public comment, um, let's try to keep it to three minutes if we can, and, uh. So.
I'll keep track.
Hi, my name is Tommy Paul, um, and we have two digital rentals that we own in the city of Delrayos. One of the ones was purchased in the last month, uh, and then we purchased another one previously, uh, in the twenty twenty one. Uh, I think it's a really common sense approach to have a a cap on the number, uh. My wife and I, uh, were educators and theater C for a long time. Uh, I'm handling this sort of business now full time and a few other rentals in Santa Cruz area as well as, uh, in Breda. Uh, and every jurisdiction has its rules. We work with different jurisdictions, having different rules and having a cap. Is actually good for everyone involved, for homeowners in the area, for those that have ignition rentals that are managing them appropriately. It limits the amount of competition for us, so that's, that's a perfect for us. We appreciate that. Uh, I think the only issue that, you know, I'm I'm seeing with it is, is the cap number right now is under the amount that currently have permits. Uh, and then those are the ones that have permits have all the, the the rules and are doing the right things and we've heard that. Uh, we're not hearing the the type of complaints. Uh, so my, you know, my thought would be that those, as long as you apply. Uh, ahead of time before the this ordinance goes into effect and and approved, that you should be able to continue. And I I think there's some, maybe there's some popper back, uh, with the, and but I just wanted to like. Regerate that, because those of us who have purchased homes have invested a lot, and it's actually the only way that we could continue to survive. Yeah, without is by doing a short term rental, uh, just doing some of the price of homes you can't get. And do a, a long term rental, right, that would be viable to maintain a home. Um, so anyway, that, you know, that's my, my thoughts on this, uh, the city of Delrayos has been really fabulous in working with us. Lee and Karen have been really responsive, uh, every time that we've been working with them, so we really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Um, yeah, and, you know, thank you for considering, uh, comments and suggestions. Thank you.
Hello, hi, it's John Hideo, you know, eight eleven Harbor Place. And I just recently done an application for a strictly rental, even, uh, working on it, that's the home that we own, my family's home, since nineteen seventy. And my project recently passed away, and so that's one way we can keep the house and be able to visit the home that. Morning, and we've been working on this, we communicate since around June. And just put an application about a week ago, and, uh, but Karen mentioned that they would not look at it right now because of this ordinance that may or may not pass, so. My request would be, if I could be that, I did put an application in before it has changed, may or may not happen. Uh, you consider, uh, we do that.
Anything more, uh, voting on it? Okay, seen, uh, closely focused on it, thank you.
Um, I think we're well within our right to put a cap on the housing because if they catch twenty two, because it's. Of state wants us to have more affordable housing. So if you start putting free fall and they all become rentals and there are no houses there, regardless of the. So I think, uh. Like you say, I've got, I have so many houses available. And, again, my, my.
All right, I'll come back to the commission for comments, uh.
Saying you'll come out, he's look better, I'll add, uh, the, uh, this, this yard we on our street. Or call it window, I got one that's been across the street with me, probably now, about four years maybe, maybe four years at least. Not a thing about that. I mean, I, yeah, I see them coming in more constantly and they come in. Uh, see where we can move a lot, and they can say they're getting out to get in, and I've never been, so I think, you know, it's. Right, like, as a, I think we're looking at, we want to find that point where you keep it so it doesn't become a problem. Um, I, I think we should consider, um, like our last speaker was saying, I think, that I was gonna get that earlier mic question. If you're, if you get them before this ordinance is affected, I think, you know, fair play, we need to probably. Respect that. I mean, there are a bunch of existing rules and there are the existing rules, but I was at the point they're not, so I think, you know, we should be careful about that. And I don't have to be careful about putting a number on the plane, because if I think you put three, I know, I know, you know, there are people. Okay, you call once, you call once, you call once, there's three.
Yeah.
I, you know, so I would be your public, you know, I, I think, leaving discretion, city managers that look politically at what's going on. Decide, yeah, it'd be reasonable, no, that really wasn't a problem, you know, you're kind of just made it a problem, so. Uh, that'd be my, you know, my thoughts on, on that, but, uh, yeah, and then I guess we'll talk about the more something about the, uh. People that are unboosted, that we can do it part, you know, part time, that would be discussion we're having, I was saying. We follow the need for someone. I had numbers that exactly what you can do it, you know, how we force them out, that's, maybe that's the one. I think.
Thank you.
Oh, I think we've covered most of my concerns and questions and, um, also the input that previously. The, uh. Issue, I'm sure this will come back once, if, um, if we know housing, we need home board and whether we. We can address it now, just say percentage of available homes as opposed to a foul number, or we. Modifying the ordinance in my, come and post that bits now. But I do, uh, again, uh, like, uh, the interval. For travel, when people consider primary residents, have that as a separate cash one. Uh, appropriate way to deal with it, and then limit that to a certain number of days a year.
Um, before we, what are you going to do? Shouldn't we, we read these letters that we got? About the public here, or is that just a public record? Yeah, that's about what I heard, it's on the front counter, I think, or the front table, if anybody wants to, you all got.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Gensel, we should consider the, um, owner, primary residence. Used separately, um, and, uh, with a cap on that amount of time that it's done. I also think that we should have a very definitive statement about what we do with any applications that are. Are not, are coming in now before we finalize it, and I would imagine it puts a burden on our staff. That's to probably address that issue. So I think we do need to have a definitive statement as to how we are going to handle any applications. That are in the process or will come before this is final.
If I can, I'd just like to interject, um, you said, how do you feel about, um, the. Applications that may come in before your document is.
Yeah, I I just, I mean, I guess, I look at it sort of like in two of the new, if we make a change law. It becomes expected every day, but. Well, before that, it's not, I think it's far, maybe kind of going to be greater, and start saying, well, we think this is gonna happen, so we're gonna stop. Processing or slow down, I think, I think that, I don't know, to me, that's, I mean, to me, it's like, we got set of rules, and someone's paying by the set of rules. And if it changes the next day, well, they do it on Friday, they change it on one people, right, they got in, I mean, I don't, I just wanna. Know where, you know, it seems like it would be. Working, right, uh, to do something different in this transition, I don't know, talking about it.
What was your feeling on that?
Well, I do agree with that, but I do also worry that since we already have the most immediate ruling, and this for three to six months. And we're hit out that this is gonna change, so you better hurry up and get your application in at Delrayos. Because things are changing and we won't be able to do it after that, and then all of a sudden, our twenty goes up to six. So I think we have, we'll get it from.
Yeah, they buy the homes, I mean, virtual, people that, people living.
Well, there's rental homes that could be slightly changed.
That's true.
Many rental homes that could, could be changed, the short term rental, we know that, as we've heard, that the revenue on a short term rental is. Much more favorable than. Many rental homes that could be changed in the short term. And we know that, as we've heard, that the revenue on a short term rental was much more favorable than regular. So we do just need to be calm and, uh, to move to really decide what we want to do.
Can you put something literally, you put in any words that's retroactive to a current board and that when we work?
Yeah, that gets tricky. I'll work with the city. Yeah, I, you know, so the, the ordinance has written, there was an application process and so applying doesn't guarantee approval. Uh, so there is really way for the city to make determinations in that regard. And if we are, if you know, we are moving towards, uh, obtaining orders, that's a mitigating factor in terms of decision. But also remember, hey, we just started to charge a bit, two and a half percent. If you want to go to three percent, approximately two percent of twenty five. It's by more, uh, and that would probably get through that period. It would give a little wiggle room on the cap. Uh, not a significant increase, so something for y'all to consider.
Do you do, so it's a reading, first reading, second reading. And I know in past experience, you can have a meeting, the upcoming, uh, city council, they could, that could be a first meeting is to get all this in, in there. They can hold a special two weeks later and they can make it effective prior, you know, three days after that. So I mean, you could push this kind of fast if you wanted. I mean, that is.
Yeah. So, uh, we could do it the other way around. We could do the first reading as a special council meeting, but it's the adoption has to happen at a regularly scheduled.
Okay.
So just process wise, it'll, it'll go to the, uh, August twenty second, uh, council meeting, the first reading. That's what we're planning on anyway. Uh, and then there would go for the second reading on the September twenty sixth meeting. Assuming we have the one move forward.
Okay. And, and meanwhile, if we want to, could we give it the moratorium after thirty days from now, for example, to just kind of cap it? Or at least stop until this is all, you know, giving people thirty days to crawl in the process.
Basically stopping applications that were shown.
Uh, thirty days of not.
Uh, no, no, yeah. But, but, correct, like we said, we, we have a set of rules in place now. So we kind of have, we do have a policy.
So I know there's two process now. Is there more than two?
Uh, there's two that I know of.
Have they physically complied?
One has, yes.
I just curious, is there any short term rentals in New York?
Uh, it's not allowed by H O A. Then believe me, uh, who's caught of you and we, uh, info service.
Good.
When I call him.
Okay. I mean, in fact, to entertain voters and. Yeah, here, let me help you with lower and off staff.
Yeah, no, I think we should, I think we should, uh, three percent up to twenty five is what I think. For the forever. And that would cover the applications that are in progress and then in stragglers until they get a promotion. Well, um, we'll do to, go to approve, move to approve with the, uh, the, uh, we.
A lot of corrections.
And they've seen, they've heard that three percent rather than two and a half.
Which can reach it in twenty years.
Yeah, but that's, that's, yes, in twenty years, maybe by then when the house I got sold.
Chair, can I have that restated?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um.
Oh, yeah. Well, go ahead.
I'm relieved that, um, we changed the ordinance. We need the number officially twenty five, five point two four. Uh, to cap the unhoused short term rental licenses at three percent of available city council units. Um, posted short term rental licenses remain unlimited. Your maximum number of vehicles allowed go on and off street parking cannot exceed the number of veterans. And no amplified sound beyond property property. And if there was some minor worry or, that we didn't really discuss concerning that in code in, code for the owner, for the tenant.
Okay, first, uh, for the discussion.
I think for now that, that does, I do think it's something we can actually discuss sort of the, I mean, one of the, uh, I suppose, um, I mean, we don't necessarily have to address that right now. We can, we can make this change by any day at some point. Once we get this sold out, it would be good. At least come back and have that discussion, a further discussion about what we would like to need to do with that, if anything. But I think for tonight, for getting this going to the council, when we set, maybe that's we think what we have here, the, uh, changes and.
And if we find out any loopholes, we can always cement it.
Right. Well, something we can always come back in there and, and, and that, but that one particular, it's not that we know like they have that extension. I'm just saying, I think to keep this process moving, maybe we table that particular discussion. We can add that again. Once they were in pass, if there's any amendments going to the, it seems like we need to get it to counseling.
Yeah, come on, we can through the chair. So based on this discussion, we'll, we'll be putting something together for council consideration. Um, uh, to treat those, those short term rentals separately.
Okay.
And not a condition.
Let, let them idea of that. And that's no possible.
Right. And then, and then, cause I, I think we all generally, everybody is, and I, I'm getting general consensus agreement that we want to move in that direction and treat those differently than traditional one house.
Yes.
Uh, and then at the council level, they can talk about whether to cap the number of days and what that looks like.
Oh, yeah. And I would encourage all of you to show up and let them know that. That's my statement.
Commissioner Gessel, any further discussion?
Uh, happy. I only further the discussion and owners of these short term rentals. However, they would claim out that if we are eliminating competition for these, that it wouldn't be unreasonable to relook at the fees that we are charging. Uh, I do know, having been a previous owner of an Airbnb, rentals generally occur based upon the, the prices, based upon the availability in the region. And if we're limiting the availability of the region, those prices go up. I don't think it's unreasonable for us then to relook at our, our fees for that, for that.
There you go. I may go ahead, Chair. Uh, and so one of the things that was in the budget for this year is to, uh, have a consultant come in and look at all of the city's fees. Because it's been a number of years since we've looked at all of the fees. So this will be included in that evaluation. Uh, and then I will just tip my cards. Uh, we will be talking to the council about potentially going back to the voters to increase the, uh, give the percentage of, we are the lowest in the region. Everyone, everyone else between twelve and fourteen.
Thank you.
Now for the difference.
With the backup.
Yeah, we do live in, in this city, the peninsula. So check out.
No further discussion. Thanks for the good work.
And I had further discussion, but I don't know what it is. Oh, I know it was.
We have a balance of probably. Never.
Right. Um, but I wanted to add to that motion, um, that we make sure that each of these places have, um, a binder, something that we recommend what's in it so that the renters are fully aware of what are what'll happen if they're ready to do that or they have six part, whatever. That's administrative. We need that. Okay. If you have a second?
I.
We discussed it. Roll call.
Commissioner, yes. Commissioner Jack Shaw, Commissioner Wood, Chairman Hayward, Commissioner Amadi, Commissioner Gessels, Commissioner Creakers.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Um, so come back, uh, to with Commissioner, uh, well, there was a few issues though. And ask the, kind of, um, announcements like, uh, commissions. Okay, I'm all, uh, that's down there as well.
Just real quickly, I'm sorry, about, um, last month, I was going to go to investors in June, uh, California, turn it into the honorary day economic partnership, uh, housing summit. Really interesting. I mean, I had all the people there and developers, you know, people there advocating for, uh, the homes, uh, the, uh, couple of different, uh, people there from, uh, my David Commerce is, and it was just really interesting to hear all the different perspectives on, on the problem and how to be fix it. I think, uh, a couple of things in there. One of them that they were like universally agreed upon is, is making, making the process more predictable. Not even necessarily streamlined. This is predictable. That was the number one thing, like from developers, from even from the housing advocates themselves said, you know, cities are made predictable. So that's, you know, I know there was a discussion for about the objective design. So, uh, that's, that's kind of where that's coming from. There's lots of push, matter of all sides and that. The other one I thought was interesting and kind of specific to me was just the idea that we get cut up the numbers. You know, numbers, green, the numbers, all these numbers. And the one thing, even the, the Javers Commerce guy, uh, the county kept coming back to us, or Slade Valley came upon. He'll come back. It's like, well, numbers are peak. I mean, it's like, we, we never lose sight of like that. We're from all these numbers to other numbers. You know, we gotta meet this number like talking to my, my middle kid right about, oh, you gotta do this assignment. But those are people, they, we work with the places that we shop at and, you know, they need a place to live. So just always keep that human side in our back of our mind. It's not just, uh, two days to bond, uh, give you the, uh, uh, URL. See, if you want to see them, you can look out. If, uh, if you don't want to roll them up or you want to type that in, but you know, I'll, I'll send you P I F N S five one seven. Anyway, and Karen, I probably give a little bit of this out to me once while.
Great, thank you.
Lee, that's it.
Um, I think really, although I will say that one of the things that I, I've seen, uh, that very interesting, uh, is, uh, 3D printing homes. And you're laughing, but they are, I guess, need 3D printed, uh, co- of type of concrete and, and, uh, efficient. The homes are efficient as far as energy use. And, uh, the process is very time efficient and which obviously cuts the cost. So, I mean, there are, we're, we're living in a wonderful era of times. And, uh, let's not, uh, uh, obviously, uh, design objectives and things for our support, but let's not get caught up in saying, you know, we have to stick with the traditional construction methods. That there's, uh, you know, go out and look, uh, and see that all happened with these 3D homes and that, and there's often ones that are actually home block. But, you know, like windows and then phones still become the, again, uh, an efficient way. And that I've seen done and I saw that done over forty years ago in Germany. So it's not something that's new to me. But they're, they're, they're pre-fab, but they're not. In, in some cases, it's like old, like construction, but for 3D printing cars, there's a whole community going in and that's, uh, 3D printed.
So this is one thing. But this week I had the opportunity to visit the city of Monterey's orphan house on their six, uh, thousand, uh, that we see what they were doing. So they have to do, um, approximately, well, over thirty six hundred new units for their numbers. They showed, uh, approximately fifty optional sites to do this. Um, many of them were commercial sites that could then be turned into residential sites, which we obviously don't have that sort of, um, type of option here. Um, also, uh, they were looking at their, uh, port or, and they have a little over a hundred acres and they were looking at more housing on that hundred acres than we're looking at a three hundred acres. And then one of the more interesting, um, options that they were looking at were, was to turn the Del Rocky Mall into a mixed use. Such as some of the malls you may have seen, maybe in Santa Fe and, um, so they had a row of a few. So that was some of the options that they're looking at. So they're still working on it. I did then have the opportunity to ask one of the planners what they've been doing around their objective design standards. And they said that they have developed some for some of their overlay projects. Um, so very specific, okay, you know, small for their risk. And they know that they need to work on it in general for the entire city. Um, I asked if any of that is available on their website. It is not yet. They're planning to put it on their website, but one of the, um, staff promised to send it to me by email. I haven't reached with them yet, but I think it will be good for us as we will pivot into doing our own to start hearing from others in the neighborhoods about what they're, how they're approaching it.
Which is.
And especially if they're having, so having that. Thank you.
Oh, um, expect some notification. We're gonna have a movie night at the next summer or so.
Um, we have our annual garage sale last week. It was a outstanding success. We went from an average of seventy to over a hundred. We're really into citizen induction, we're writing, uh, could someone like for projects that we're going to do. I want to thank the police for doing their rounds. We had a few minor little accidents that, uh, and my cul-de-sac goes red light and I can imagine, uh, for total, it's pretty much that way all the time. But I think everybody really enjoys, um, neighbors get to meet new members more than are down the street. They've never seen her or talked to her, whatever. That's always, uh, I love that. It's a nice community, uh, ever that keeps, keep up really hard and tight. Um, and that goes on to, uh, the short term rentals because we are a small community and everybody does know everybody. If anything happens down the street and I'm like, hmm, sat around down the street, you know, or I went by. And I don't like the, the palpable data thing, but the other side of this, but we all know what's going on, you know, and it's, on the good sides, it's just a nice community. People walking by, Michael was saying, walk the dogs and I made a point to go out and give the dog a dog treat and say hello and forty other, so I just, because I grew up here, that came here in fifty five and, uh, as a kid, I grew up here and it's nice to see new families come. What I used to do, so, and, and thanks to, you know, police that did a great job.
Did I not have anything to add? I just started, so.
I, um, I, I don't really have anything to add other than I've helped work with these people, but you did a great job tonight and thanks from staff for, you know, even, uh, taking the caution last night.
Gradually, I was golfing and ignoring all the text messages back there and try it like this. My neighbor, my neighbor in South America, they fly high because you're like, it's bad. It's bike driveway, can't park here. I have to leave. You know, you get rid of that guy, he put his car in the ride, okay?
All right. Well, um, the next meeting in Delrayos, uh, then the mission will be September thirteenth, two thousand, five, three, six P M. Keep you in the turn.
So Louise, Louise, Denise and Colleen, I have your form.